Evening, everybody. Welcome to City Council. We'll call this meeting to order and we're going to start with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our invocation tonight will be given by Father Jim Lyons from St. Christopher's Church. And please rise. Do not see him.
Duncan? Duncan?
Yeah?
Want to help out?
I don't usually do that kind of thing. Maybe the mayor can, he prays in public more than I do.
All right. I'd be happy to pray. Thank you. Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful that we could be gathered in this public city council meeting tonight. We ask thy blessings upon us that we can have a good meeting, that we will have civil discourse, and that we will take care of the city's business in a manner that's pleasing to thee and pleasing to our community. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve and to interact with one another and to be citizens in this great community of Boulder City. We are so thankful for the bounteous blessings that we have here, for the good citizens that live here, and the chance that we have to rub shoulders with one another, learn from one another, raise our families together, and that we ask that thy blessings will be upon us, that we can direct the city in a way that will help us to be prosperous and to plan for the future, that we can have goodwill towards all and make Boulder City an inviting place for all to come to and live in and work and play in. We are mindful of all that thou has done for us and we invoke thy blessings upon this meeting tonight and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. All right. We have a few public announcements tonight. First off, we have our acting city manager. I think that's Kevin Nicholson. Is that right? With some kind of announcement?
Some kind of announcement. Well, I'm up here for short term, but I wanted to take the time this evening on behalf of the city manager to celebrate a special occasion that's coming, right behind me. It's all yours.
You did a wonderful job there, fire chief. So, Honorable Mayor and Council, I come from the Far East. Where was I? Oh, DC. And I understood that there was a special event that's going to be happening this month. And woe would be me if I were to, again, miss another very important special occasion, a birthday sometime in the month of March. And so, I really wanted to get here in time to be able to celebrate this. But it is a special birthday because it does have two numbers and it is over 50. We'll just leave it at that. And, you know, I do have, you know, some help because I think it's appropriate that we have some assistance in singing "Happy Birthday" to the mayor.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Rodney. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Whoa.
Oh, my goodness. Those are for me.
Thank you. I was on to all of you, but I didn't know all of you were coming. And I really don't need all this, so I'm sharing it tonight.
Yeah, we have donuts.
Thank you. That's so nice.
We have the right team and everything.
Right team. Kalsma Schuman will argue with you on that.
Are you a donut lover?
I guess I am. Thank you. Wait, where's my kiss from Kalsma Hare's wife? I was...
You've got syrup.
Yeah, I might make the front page, too.
I can't have one so far.
Guess I better blow out my fire hazard.
Yes.
You're my kind of guy, Rich.
Please do.
Oh, no, share.
Thank you, guys. I love you.
I don't have a food storage.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Glad you had a birthday.
The biggest surprise is that our city manager's back.
I'm eating dinner.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
That was a really good donut.
All right. So, we do have another public announcement, and that's from Michael Mays, our Community Development Director regarding the Big Clean.
Well, good evening, mayor and members of the council. I don't know if I can top that, though, but I do want to remind our residents that this coming Saturday, March 30th, we're having the Second Annual Big Clean. This is a partnership between the Chamber and the city. It will be held at the Bravo Field parking lot between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM. It's a great opportunity for residents to clean out their yards and their properties of items that can be recycled and reused. And this effort not only helps the organizations that will be partnering with the Chamber and the city, but it helps to improve Boulder City's neighborhoods and aligns with our motto of being clean, green Boulder City. On the city's website, we have additional information about the event, as well as information about acceptable items. You can also call the Community Development Department if you have any questions. So, we're looking forward to everybody coming out on March 30th.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is our initial public comment period devoted to items on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item? Duncan? Mr. McCoy, I should say.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. It's entertaining and diverting to be on this side of the room for a change. I came to talk a little bit about Agenda Item Number Four, I believe it is, on the Consent Agenda. This is the 15th Annual Best Am Barbecue, Kansas City Barbecue Society-sponsored competition for cookers from all over the country. You see them driving down the road with their motorhomes and their big barbecue apparatuses trailing along behind. They come in here, they cook, they earn points for national competition. We have street vendors, we have retail vendors, we have lots and lots of people, we have outdoor entertainment and live music. It's going to be a lot of fun. Most of us have been to this before. I know I have. The rest of my Rotary Club has. This is sponsored by the Rotary Club of Boulder City, which is the original Rotary Club, of which I'm president this year. We have Larry Archileta with us, who's this year's barbecue chairman. Larry, you want to stand up? And he's next year's Rotary Club president. We're here to answer questions. Should you decide to pull this off the consent agenda, we'll be happy to answer whatever questions you have. This will bring in 12,000 to 15,000 people in Boulder City. We did try to make the proposal as crystal clear as we possibly could. So, here we are. We're working down toward the barbecue. It'll be a lot of fun. Y'all come. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have an entry this year?
I don't do brisket. I do ribs. I do chicken.
All right. Thank you. Thank you to our Rotary Club for coming out. Okay, so we... Oh, any other public comment on an agenda item? Okay, we'll close our initial public comment period and move to our approval of our regular agenda. Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Counsel?
I'll move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next is our approval of the Consent Agenda. Madam City Clerk?
No changes.
Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
Come back to counsel.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. So, again, thank you to our Rotary Club. Congratulations to you on that. Don't think I saw... Oh, maybe. We have a fourth grader back there in the back? Go ahead and stand up so we can recognize you. Are there any others out there? Yell out your name for us.
Trevor Gaddish.
Trevor. Thanks for coming tonight, Trevor. We appreciate you being here. He's here for the Nevada Citizen. All right. So, we are on then to our regular agenda, and our first item is recognition of advisors and explorers from Post 198. Come on in, guys and gals.
Wow, give me some big trophies.
I'm Tim Shea, and I'm the Chief of Police, and I have Sergeant Tomeo here. He's one of our advisors, and he will tell you what these young guys and gals did down in Chandler.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Craig Tomeo. I'm a sergeant with the Boulder City Police Department. And for the sixth year in a row, the explorers went down to Chandler for competition relating to explorer law enforcement things. This year, there were six different states that participated. There were over 50 posts that participated and just under 1,000 explorers that participated. We took home four trophies this year. We took home first place for the Female Explorer Advisor Run. That's Ms. Emily Mays. She ran like a bunny down there. She was the first female to cross the line down there. She was fantastic as far as running. Then, we took first place for the 511 Tactical Breach and Officer Down Rescue. What that is, is they had to go breach a door, then they had to go in, rescue a downed officer, and bring him through. We took first place for that. Again, understand the dynamics of how many explorers are down there. We took third place for what's known as Tubular Assault, where we assaulted a bus. And then, we ended up taking fourth place for Tactical Emergency Medicine. But I'm extremely proud of our advisors. We combined up our advisors and explorers. We combined with the Las Vegas Department of Public Safety, formerly known as the Marshals, and we went down there as a tandem team, as we have done in the past, with Henderson and Metro. So, we're extremely proud of them. We have advisors, and you see other explorers standing off to the side that they weren't able to go down and go. But we're extremely proud of them.
Thank you. And just for the public's benefit, can you explain the difference between advisors and explorers?
Okay. Advisors are commissioned police officers that are advising the explorers. And if you equate it to the Boy Scouts, they're the scout masters and assistant scout masters. And since you brought that up, Giovanni Torcasso is an advisor. You saw him stand up when he just got pinned as a new officer. He has been with us as an explorer. So, you went from an explorer to a commissioned officer. You also see two other men in blue standing off to the side. You've got Kevin Barakat and Kenny Calzada. They were also explorers, and now they're commissioned police officers. So, this is what your program from the city is breeding and how you're getting a gene pool for officers. I mean, we're extremely proud to have them on as full-time officers now, and it just shows you what your program that you guys support does for the city. And we are self-funded, but we get a lot of help from people throughout the city that donate for us because we had to come up with our own money to go to Chandler for the past six years. And again, that's about, normally about $5,000. But that's what you can expect out of the explorers for future police officers.
That's great. And so, this young gentleman right here is an explorer, correct? But he's got a special uniform on? Is there a reason for that?
Correct. He's from the Las Vegas Department of Public Safety. He's one of the marshals. Unfortunately, all of them weren't able to come up. He's representing them. It's Christian Lopez, and he is their lieutenant for that because there is rank within the explorer organizations.
All right. Well, thank you. Don't they look great, everybody? They always represent Boulder City really well. We're going to come down, counsel, if you would, and take a few pictures. You'll hand out some certificates, too.
Okay. Here we go. Ready?
No problem. Now, I'll take a couple here. One more.
Perfect. Thank you. Think you had some more here.
All right. I'm just going to hand these out to you. This is not going to be your certificate, probably, once you get lucky, but you can rearrange it when you get out there.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Want to see how adept you are doing this. Congratulations. I'll give you two, maybe. Congratulations. Fast runner. Bad guys aren't going to know. Thank you. That'd be great. Thank you. Good job, guys.
I always let anybody who wants to talk, talk, so... Any takers?
My name is Anil Sharma. I am the sergeant with the Boulder City Police Department's Explorer Program. I just wanted to thank everyone for giving us the opportunity to come up here and giving us a bit of your time. It's an absolute pleasure to serve the Boulder City community, and we're all very excited to continue our service to the city of Boulder. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for coming out tonight. You're wonderful. The explorers always represent Boulder City well and always do a great job in their competitions down there. Every year, I get to talk about them in my State of the City, and they make us proud. And thank you, chief. All right. Our next item is item number seven, a presentation of the Parks and Recreation Director's annual report. We have Roger Hall, our Parks and Rec Director.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Roger Hall, Director of Parks and Recreation for the great city of Boulder City. And it's my honor tonight to present a list of accomplishments completed by the Parks and Recreation Department for 2018. The Parks and Recreation Department staff work hand in hand with a number of other city departments to make sure the job gets done. We appreciate their hard work and dedication to the city of Boulder City, the Public Works Department, Police Department, Fire Department, Finance, Community Development, City Clerk's Office, and Communications Manager, just to name a few. Thank you very much for your assistance. I would also like to thank the city manager and you, the city council, for your continued support in making Boulder City a great place to live. Our mission is to provide high-quality and cost-effective recreation activities for all residents of Boulder City. Here are some statistics that we put together. Participants range from six months to over 100 years old, over 40 different special interest classes, over 668 participants last year in our youth sports program, seven different adult sports leagues, over 150 special event applications annually, and for 2018, we approved 50 film shoot applications. The first major project we've been working on is the new aquatic facility. Working with the Public Works Department and SNH Architecture and Communications Manager, the community is buzzing about the possibility of a new aquatic center. As you are aware, the swimming pool is constructed in 1980 and in a poor state of repair. 39 years is a long time, and mechanical systems are failing. In an effort to get the word out to our residents, we have had a number of workshops, town hall meetings, surveys, and more. The current state of the facility is very poor. There is rust on the doors and within the mechanical room, cracks in the deck and the bottom of the pool. SNH Architecture was hired to get the community input and present a conceptual design for the community-preferred facility. The question of financing a new aquatic facility will be on the June ballot for consideration. Other parks and facility improvements working with the Public Works Department include Lakeview Park. Lakeview Park was renovated and a new gazebo was added to the park. The entire park was upgraded, and some of the funding was through the CDBG block grant fund with the county. Again, working with the Public Works Department, a new basketball court was constructed at Veterans Memorial Park. There you go. That is, what you're looking at is the CDBG Lakeview Park. But we are very pleased with how it turned out with the basketball court at Veterans Memorial Park in this beautiful park setting. Shade structures were also installed at the bleacher area at Bravo Softball Field, and these turned out great, and I'm sure they'll be appreciated in the weeks to come when it gets so hot out there for the people watching the games and... Yes. Another project completed during this time was the replacement of the playground safety surfacing at several of our parks, including Del Prado Park, Hemman Way Park, Veterans Memorial Park, and Bicentennial Park. We also installed exercise equipment for adults at Veterans Memorial Park Playground by the Splash Park. And what a better way to watch your kids and get some exercise at the same time. Another exciting improvement at the Rec Center was the replacement of the old lighting system with the LED system. And wow, if you play basketball, what a difference, more light, and saving a bunch of money for the city of Boulder City. Working with Brock Armitrat, our Contracts Manager, Diane Pelletier, Finance Director, and Julie Callaway from Parks and Rec, we were able to combine all concessions under a new Director of Golf contract with Andy Shaper. This allows us to have one point of contact for both courses. It also allows the courses to work together versus competing against each other, and we are looking forward to seeing increased revenue at both courses, and great things are expected from our new golf director, Andy. Special events filming in unique Boulder City, the Parks and Rec Department coordinates a number of special events for the city. Over 150 special events for 2018, to be exact. Working with the Fire Department, Police Department, and Public Works, we make sure all special events are coordinated and safe for all residents and visitors to our unique town. The city of Boulder City, in partnership with the Fourth of July Danbury Committee, hosts a full day of fun events and patriotic activities annually in Boulder City. And pictured is a huge crowd enjoying themselves at Veterans Memorial Park in anticipation of the amazing fireworks show. The Pumpkin Man Triathlon is another great event. Participants from all over the country and world come to Boulder City to swim at Lake Mead, bike up that torturous hill from the lake, and run a 5K which finishes up at Wilbur Square and Bicentennial Park in the heart of downtown. Boulder City is also becoming famous as a photo shoot and movie location destination. We coordinate 50 film shoots at different facilities during 2018. The most popular film location is the El Dorado Dry Lake Bed, and we receive many referrals from the Nevada Film Office. Boulder City is a very unique place. Many residents and visitors enjoy our beautiful parks and recreations such as Bootleg Canyon. Children learn about our unique animal life and experience the beautiful outdoors. We also provide amenities for a variety of our four-legged friends as well. And Hemman Way Park has become a destination for a variety of tour operations who bring thousands of people to the park to see our wild bighorn sheep herd. Visitors get the opportunity to see and photograph these magnificent animals in our beautiful park setting. Looking forward, the Parks and Rec Department and the Public Works Department have a variety of projects for the upcoming fiscal year. Oasis Park improvements will include the renovations of the old basketball court there, including a non-slip surface and installation of some new playground equipment. Staff will continue to get the word out to the public regarding the proposed new aquatic center. Many meetings will be scheduled over the next few months to educate the public on this project, and we encourage active participation from the public as the ballot question will be decided in June. Shade for participants and spectators is also very important in the desert, and we're working to get shade over the bleachers at Whalen Baseball Field, over the bleachers at Veterans Memorial Park as well. Infrastructure repairs to our other facilities are also very important. We'll be repairing some stream beds at the Boulder Creek Golf Course, which started leaking a few years back. Conservation of our precious resource water is very important to Boulder Creek and as well as Boulder City Golf Course. And next year, we'll be starting the process to renovate the irrigation system at the municipal golf course by upgrading the almost 50-year antiquated system. The city will have much more irrigation control, which will save the city a great deal of money and conserve our precious resource. Bootleg Canyon is becoming a very unique recreation area, and we'd like to do a feasibility study for possible improvements. This valuable asset to Boulder City attracts thousands of visitors who ride, walk, and explore beautiful Bootleg Canyon. Last but not least, we are working with Andy Shaper, our new Director of Golf, to install a disc golf course at Boulder Creek. Working with the local disc golf company, we will be introducing disc golf to the residents of Boulder City and introducing Boulder City to the disc golf community. Disc golf has been a popular sport, which has a potential to raise revenue at the Boulder Creek Golf Course. That is the end of my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Roger. You know, a lot of times, we think of Boulder City as a destination for outdoor adventure, and we tend to think of what, you know, outside partners do to make that happen. But honestly, you know, your presentation shows that that's happening internally constantly here, and upgrading our facilities, introducing new programs and new sports and other things like that. It's fantastic. Great presentation. Counsel? Mr. McManus?
I know that it's been proposed in the budget work at Reflection Park Center. I didn't see that among your list of parks that were to be looked at. Is that something that is on your agenda or...
Yes, sir. We're working with the Landscape Department. We're going to be probably taking out all that small rock and putting in DG, decomposed granite, replacing parts of the irrigation system, and also putting in some new plants. So, yes, that's on the radar as well.
Okay. And the other thing that I... The projects that you had on there and ones that are proposed, the neighborhood parks, again, I think that is very important to our community. Certainly, improvements at Veterans Park are needed, but I think those neighborhood parks are the ones that our community gets to use the most, and glad to see that there's work being done on those as well.
Well, it's very important to keep those up because, again, the community uses those. They live close to the park. They're used every day, and it's very important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lovett?
Great presentation, Roger. Thank you. What is disc golf?
Oh, well, it's like with a frisbee, and you have a regular golf course. It's set up with posts and it has a kind of a net around it with a chain, and it's just like a par three, par four, par five. You get that many throws of the frisbee to get it into net, into the hole. And it's just like golf, but it's using a frisbee instead of a golf ball.
So, you play it at a golf course?
We are working it out on the back nine of... Oh, well, it's like with a frisbee, and you have a regular golf course. It's set up with posts and it has a kind of a net around it with a chain, and it's just like a par three, par four, par five. You get that many throws of the frisbee to get it into net, into the hole, and it's just like golf, but it's using a frisbee instead of a golf ball.
So you play it at a golf course?
We are working it out on the back nine of Boulder Creek, yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I've got a good one at Sunset Park. You should go check it out.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Item number eight, Resolution 6906 regarding Boulder City election. We have Diane Pelletier.
Good evening. Diane Pelletier, Boulder City Finance Director. Resolution 6906 is a resolution designated as the 2019 Boulder City Election Resolution. This is a procedural resolution required by bond counsel, and it's to ensure that we are notifying the public of the upcoming bond question on the June election ballot. This for the aquatic center. And we recommend passage, and I will answer any questions I can.
Okay. Any questions or comments, Counsel?
Mr. Har. I don't have a question, but I do have, let's see, I don't have a question, but I do want to make a statement in order to be consistent with my position that I took at the last council meeting. I can't vote yea in this particular resolution, but correspondingly, I cannot vote nay as well because I don't wish to hold the process up. And therefore, I want to explain why I'll abstain on this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Again, I also don't have questions necessarily of you. It's questions, again, about this project, especially the cost of it, and I know that's not a part of this that you were involved with. But again, we're being asked to approve something this evening that far exceeds what the architects had offered. It is, was dubbed the Community Preferred Model. When it was originally submitted, it was at 21 million, then went to 27, then 37. Now we're at 40. The total cost of this will be approximately 80 million to the taxpayers over the life of these bonds if they were to be approved for 40 million. Is that correct?
Based on the interest rate used in the net calculation. But again, it doesn't mean we're going to issue that many bonds. Just wanted to throw that out there, too.
And I do understand that, and again, that's another problem that I have with this. There was a resolution at the last meeting that, oh gee, we promised not to do that, and yet here we are again saying we will do that up to the $40 million. Probably more troubling for me is the fact that we are still not identifying a particular project here. We're asking for $40 million of approval for any recreational-related activity. It's not specific to the project. It's not specific to the location. Again, I find that very troubling, and I don't feel it's necessary. Again, I understand that that's not part of what you were involved with the wording of, but it's very clear that this can be used for any recreational-related purpose, and that is a very broad category as defined by the statute. I do think that this could be modified in such a way that we could specify exactly what project and what location this is being done for. I also didn't find anything, at least in the referenced statutes, where this is necessary at this time. Our laws here in Boulder City say that we have to go to the voters and ask for approval for debt beyond $1 million. This, the wording at least of the statutes that were cited, is just to go ahead and do the actual issuance of the bonds. I didn't find anything in the statute that said this has to be done prior to the voters giving their approval. This appears to be something that counsel could do if the voters do approve that amount. And again, I know that may not be something you would understand, Mr. City Attorney. Is that something that you would like to speak to?
This is the recommendation of our bond counsel to bring this at this time, so we're following that recommendation because they're.
Well, I'm asking if it's a requirement within the statute because I did not find it as a requirement.
As far as the notice and the publication, yes, that is a requirement, so.
Okay, I understand that part of it, but this is going beyond that. This is actually authorizing the issuance of these bonds at the time that the question, if it passes.
The voters will have to approve that if that's going to happen, so.
Well, again, it seems that we're bringing two things together here. I understand that the statute requires us to give notice to the voters about this, but this resolution goes beyond that and actually approves the sale of these bonds.
Can I just speak because I talked to the attorney?
Please, I'm addressing this to the city attorney at this time.
And this has been, that's right. This has been a team effort. I have not spoken with bond counsel. This has been something that has been done between our city clerk and finance director, and this is, excuse me, their recommendation, this resolution. So it's a procedural step that they deem necessary prior to this question going before the voters. And so we're following, you know, the advice of bond counsel in that regard. Our city clerk has apparently had a direct conversation with our bond counsel in this regard, so, again, we're following the advice of bond counsel because it's necessary that we do that, and we take those steps in order for this to procedurally happen as it's supposed to happen.
Again, I don't find that in statute. If we are relying upon opinions by bond counsel, I would prefer to see that included in our packet so that I can understand exactly what it is they're basing that on. Madam City Clerk, you had something to input?
Well, I asked the exact question that you're asking to the bond attorney directly because they had submitted a 19-page resolution a month ago that I questioned whether or not it was even necessary. The election resolution was not accurate, so we had a bunch of changes to make. And when I talked to him on the phone, I asked him, is this a necessary resolution since we are holding a bond election in conjunction with our general election? This seems to speak to calling for this resolution if we were to hold a special election outside of our election cycle. He advised me that it is required by law.
Well, again, my reading of the law that's being referenced is only that that notification of the intent to do this is put to the voters, and a resolution for that has to be decided by counsel. What's included in this resolution is the actual authorization to go ahead with up to $40 million in bonds. And again, if there is information that's being relied upon by outside counsel, I want to see that in the packet.
We'll keep that in mind, but I would just like to say that when they give us recommendations, and they're responsible for the wording of this because it's what they do, if we were to not follow their direction, they're not going to issue a validity opinion in order to issue the bonds. So we did review it. Diane and I talked it over numerous times, and he did make some changes that we were concerned about. I will express that, or Diane can, or Steve can, to them that this seems confusing and to maybe cite, I mean, I thought it was cited in the resolution, but, you know, I hear what you're saying, and we'll be sure to make that clear to them.
Well, then, I guess my question for you would be, this is not necessary tonight. There is no deadline at this time for this to be done tonight. Is that correct?
That is not correct.
When is the deadline?
It has to be passed tonight because I have to send it to them because we publish it in the paper, and it has to be passed in order to get it to the paper in time to publish in April.
Okay. I thought that the dates for publication that were listed were in May.
They need it. I had to beg her to push it out two weeks.
This was pulled from the last meeting agenda because they wanted it on that one, so we pulled it off, and we had numerous conversations with them, and here we are tonight. So we really can't put it off to another meeting.
And I guess the problem is that, you know, I understand that you all have been doing work on this. I personally, and I don't believe the other members of counsel, have the benefit of that research to be able to make the decision on those types of things at this time. And again, we're, this project seems to be constantly against a deadline. We have to do something on deadline, and when we're talking about $40 million, that works out to, I think it's about $5,000 per person for everybody here in Boulder City. I don't like doing those things on deadline. Almost done. Also, looking at the other statutory references in there, it appears that we've already met the prerequisites. This has gone before the Debt Management Commission. That information has already been put in there. As I read through the NRS that's referred to, again, I don't find where this level of authorization is required at this time. So I'll be proposing an amendment based on whatever other conversation we may have here tonight. I'll let other members of counsel have their input first, however.
Thank you. Mr. Schuman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'll weigh in a little bit on this. A, I think we all need to vote on this. I don't see why anybody would be able to abstain, but secondly, you know, this isn't about the election question. It's more of a question of procedure and following bond counsel's recommendation, and since we are moving forward with this election question, which we've already had a chance to debate, and we have all weighed in on how we feel about that and voted on that already, since we are moving forward with this, I think it's appropriate, more than appropriate, to follow the recommendation of our bond counsel, which was handed to our legal counsel and our clerk and yourself, and I don't see any reason to question it. If we're moving forward with this election question, which we are, then I think it's appropriate to follow bond counsel. That's my feelings.
Thank you. All right, I'll open this up to public comment if there be any. A close public comment. You have a proposed?
Yes, in the second clause of the resolution, I would offer the amendment that it be specified that this is for a replacement facility for our existing pool and that the project be specified to be located only at Broadbent Park. And I would ask for a second on that.
Okay. Haven't heard a second. Mr. City Manager.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, although you can certainly amend this, I would be very cautious about that wording because if you use the word "pool," then that's all you can use it for. It is more than just a pool. It's an aquatic center, so it's anything and everything dealing with that facility. I know that there's been some questions about the wording. The wording is such so that it doesn't exclude any type of activity or function that is being built out there or the facilities that are being built for any functions outside of the pool. For example, if there's an office and you need to outfit that office, it would include the furniture. The furniture, you know, one would question, what does furniture have to do with a pool? If you need a mechanical room, you need things to move the water, the pumps and the heaters and whatnot. You know, sometimes you could say, yes, that's a direct, you know, correlation to the pool. Maybe not. There are other functions, other activities that are also being as part of this facility, so I want to be very cautious that, or advise the counsel to be cautious about the wording because just saying "pool" alone, you may be excluding a significant, or a portion of whatever ends up being designed and/or built in that facility and in that location.
And I would just respond that I believe the wording of the statute, the definitions that are in the statute are broad enough to cover that. My problem with this is it is not specific. The wording that's being put before the voters is that we can issue up to $40 million of money, bonds, taxes, for any recreational purpose anywhere. It is not specific to this project.
What's your statutory reference on that?
I'm looking at the wording of the resolution itself, of the ballot question, and it refers only to recreational facilities, and it is not specific to anything at Broadbent Park.
But is it, is there an NRS reference there that you're talking?
No, it's the wording. It's what we're being asked to approve is the wording.
Do we, the ballot question language has already been approved, right? And so that's what's going forward to the voters. So if we were to change this, it wouldn't square with the ballot question language, correct?
That is correct. And the other thing, too, that I would just mention to the counsel, that whether it's this particular resolution or as we move forward, anything dealing with this particular project, the counsel ultimately has the authority as to what it approves and for how much and, you know, what things will go forward, and even ultimately what amount of bonding that you would actually do. So, you know, the wording is such that it says up to 40 million. It could be, you know, significantly less. We don't know until we get to the process of designing and then getting an actual RFP out there so that we know, you know, what those bids come in at.
And that's been the issue that I've brought up all along. Those are the issues I've brought up all along on this. We don't have a firm figure. It's not related specifically to this. The statute says that these bonds could be issued up to six years. So we could finish that project, and four years from now, another composition of this council could say, well, you know what? We've decided to go ahead and issue however many millions of dollars in bonds for something else, and the approval is already there. I have a real problem with that. And I'm not just bringing that up tonight. I have brought that up throughout this process. This is not new. The problem with the wording of what's being done.
All right. Unless there's any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move for approval of Resolution 6906.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have three in favor, one abstention, and Mr. McManus, a nay.
And I believe that creates a problem under the NRS for approval of tax increase. I think you need to refer to the NRS. I believe the section is 350.020, Section 3.
So you can look into that, the motion carried, and certainly you can make inquiries with staff on that particular.
I'm making note of that, that according to that section of the statute, a two-thirds majority of this body is required for approval of a tax increase, and that's what's being referred to here.
Yeah. We'll look into that, Mayor, and we can get back to counsel on that point.
Can I ask a question, too, about the abstention? No offense, but, I mean, how do you, how can you abstain from this vote? Like, on what grounds? How is that? How, you know what I mean?
I don't think grounds are necessary, are they?
I mean, it's not a conflict of interest. It's not, you know.
You're correct. It's not a conflict, and so under those, under that rationale, there wouldn't be a need to abstain because there's no conflict.
Yeah, I just don't see where that comes from.
It's certainly not a mandatory abstention, or, so it's an elective one that Mr. Har has chosen to correct.
And it's not a recommended practice as well from the Code of Ethics.
Okay. So we are on to our final public comment period. Item number nine. Anyone wishing to speak in final public comment?
Judy DeShane. I can't, I'll have to agree with Mr. McManus's objections to the wording. When I read all this stuff through earlier today, I glanced at it over the weekend, but then I read it earlier today, and it seemed convoluted, like we're putting the horse before the cart. So I would agree with his objections to it, not that it's going to matter to anybody but me.
Thank you.
This Saturday, the senior center is sponsoring the Rock and Roll and Stroll event as a fundraiser for Meals on Wheels. So I encourage all to partake in that fun this Saturday.
Thank you. And that's at 11 o'clock? Is that correct?
Eleven o'clock.
Yeah. Ten or eleven.
Ten or eleven? I heard 11, but it might be a 10.
Eleven.
11 o'clock? Okay. Councilman Levitt?
Mr. Mayor, I had a few announcements tonight. First of all, congratulations to our explorers. They always represent Boulder City so well. A big deal is happening in Boulder City. I don't know if you've seen it on Facebook, but the ribbon cutting for the Boulder City Express is March 18th at 5:30 at Chili's. The Boulder City Express is a shuttle service between Las Vegas and Boulder City and will actually begin this weekend. This has really been a major effort by the Chamber of Commerce and kudos to Jill Legan for coordinating this and making it happen. I got to sit in a couple of meetings early on and kind of the idea behind this was that we have all kinds of tour buses that are coming out to Boulder City to go to the dam, the desert princes, the zip lines, those kinds of things. And we were trying to figure out a way how they could come into Boulder City and drop off these visitors and tourists that are bypassing our city, but just drop them off in the downtown area and let them have lunch or shop or whatever. And so through coordinating with the shuttle buses and the different attractions around Boulder City, they have worked out a deal that tourists and visitors can be dropped off in Boulder City. So they, it looks as if there's a shuttle that goes direct from Las Vegas to Boulder City. I'm not sure about that, but they're also piggybacking on all these other tours. So this has been a long time in the making and I'm very excited that it has happened. And I have talked to some of the businesses down in that area and they are just thrilled. So it'll be bringing, we'll just have to see how it works, but I think it has the potential to bring a lot more visitors to Boulder City.
What time was that again?
It's Monday, March 18th at 5:30 at Chili's. And then this morning at the LVCBA, if any of you watched the news tonight, we had kind of a, I'm going to use a pun, groundbreaking vote this morning to begin negotiations with the Boring Company. We've been looking for a people mover concept at the LVCBA for this new convention center that's being built. And from one end of the campus to the other, it's about two miles. So it's really too far for people to walk when they're at conventions, especially in the summer, although we don't have a lot of conventions in the summer, but it's just too far for people to walk. So they had, I think originally, nine people who are interested and they narrowed it down to six and then the top two. And all of the other proposals were above ground, light rail and that kind of thing, which interferes with construction and far more expensive. So this was the most inexpensive and it certainly has caught the attention of people, not only nationally, but internationally because it's so innovative. So the Boring and the tunnels really aren't a new concept because we have subways all over the world. So it's kind of a subway system, but the cars are called autonomous electric vehicles and they're all Tesla vehicles that run on these, I don't know, electronically somehow on these rails. But we saw a demonstration of it today, so this is really exciting. And another thing that's advantageous about it is that this can go on while the other construction is going on. It doesn't interfere with the construction. So there are a lot of positives to it. I also, I see Claudia out there, wanted to congratulate Emergency Aid for their, I always want to call it chips and salsa, but I think it's the salsa competition, right? Anyway, that was really a fun event, very well attended. Mike Pessini hosted. They had dancers from dance, et cetera, doing the salsa. So it was really fun and I assume it was very successful because there were so many participants there. And I just wanted to mention, if any of you take the Review Journal, they had a series of seven articles in the RJ about the Southern Nevada Water Authority and what is being done at the Southern Nevada Water Authority and the drought conditions and the drought contingency plan. And John Ensminger, who's the general manager of the SNWA, was going to be here at the next meeting to do a presentation. He called and said he'll actually be in Washington DC on that Tuesday because he'll be presenting before the Senate this drought contingency plan. So we will reschedule him. So that's my report.
Good report. Thank you. Mr. McManus.
I attended the Civilian Military Council luncheon today at Nellis Air Force Base. They're in the midst of their red flag operations. I believe they said this was the second of three for the year. They have 80, over 80 additional aircraft on the base for these exercises. I had to go in and renew my pass today. I walked into the visitor's center and it looked like the UN in there because there were Saudi officers, there were Belgian officers. They have air force personnel from all over the world in there. It's a great spectacle to see those aircraft in operation out there. They do a great job. One of the subjects that has come up for Nellis Air Force Base, they've done a recent evaluation on their economic impact of Nellis on Southern Nevada. And it was formerly at $5.5 billion in economic impact. It's now at $5.7 billion. They are looking to expand their area of responsibility in Nevada. And one point that they wanted to make clear is that as you hear about them wanting more control over more open areas, they're not expanding their areas where they drop ordinance. So they've had issues where they've had aircraft down. They've not been able to get to them until they have permission from other federal agencies. So that was a point that they want to make clear to people. They're not looking to use up more of our desert for dropping bombs on. They would just like to be able to run their mission here in Nevada. Again, that operation out there at Nellis Air Force Base is very important to Southern Nevada. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your service there. Mr. Schuman.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday is the opening day for Little League in Boulder City. It'll be a pretty fun day out there Saturday. I think it's just kind of an all-day event. And congratulations on another year of life and happy birthday. Nice to see your family. That's all.
Thank you. And I still have lots of donuts to share if you need any. So just one thing real quickly, piggybacking on what Councilwoman Levitt was saying about the Boring Company. I know that's been on the Regional Transportation Commission, RTC's radar as well for quite a while and it's an Elon Musk company, I think, that's coming in. RTC is a big leader in the nation actually in autonomous vehicle research and electric vehicles and things like that. And so we've actually developed quite a reputation throughout the nation. Tina Quigley, the director there, travels all over to give presentations and things like that. And so definitely something to watch to see what happens there. Thank you for coming tonight. We're starting in our budget cycle tomorrow morning bright and early and meeting adjourned.